All right, we're gonna try and get this done fast because it's too cold as steam for too long, so.
Fast meetings.
Welcome to the Wednesday, November 1st meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Sheriff Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Don. Sheriff Waymeyer.
Please, Ryan, with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public march to stand when we stand on our god, in this world with liberty and justice. Maybe seated. All right. Correspondence and organizational business. Do we have anything today?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Hold the comment.
We have public comment.
All right, so a citizen desiring to speak on item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in charge personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Rob Leach.
Good morning.
Morning.
I guess the reason I'm here, and I don't do very good talking, but I have an issue with a neighbor that has--
Oh, wait. Tell us your address.
Rob Leach, 4237 Finney Road, Rantoul.
Right.
I have a neighbor close that has a lot of zoning issues, and I need to know how to get in enforcement of them zoning issues. Like, I heard that Rantoul, Princeton, Richmond have a zoning enforcer, and I wondered if the county did the same, because there's several things on this property that are way out of zoning, way, way out, like junkyard, pile of tires, people living in campers, no running water, no sewer. And I've seen some of this my own self, and I just wondered how a person goes about resolving the problem that I've been arguing about for maybe two years.
Have you talked to anybody in the county?
Yes.
Okay. We do not have a codes court as of yet.
So, the zoning, I know it's a law of regulations through the county. Everybody has to come by it, or what kind of trouble could they be in, or what can a person do for that situation?
Can you leave your phone number?
Yeah.
And we'll get you in contact with the person that could possibly help.
Right, right, so, but it's turned into a turmoil because I can't even go down on my property and check my fence, my cows, or the oil wells I have on my property that could possibly leak, and they do leak, and they go into a creek, which is a very area that feeds into the Marzine River, which everybody from here to Truman Lake drinks that water. And if you don't go check them every day, then there could be problems, and these people are irritated with me because they think I'm spying on them every time I go down my own timber, which I'm not, but they think I am. That's about really all I got. I just wondered how to go about it.
All right, we'll see what we can do.
Don't know anything about the situation, so I won't be able to tell you much just right here and there, but it sounds like you've talked to Pat and obviously need to see--
Right, Kenny Cook come out, Larry Walrath, I've talked to him in the past. I know this property don't have any running water at all. They get the water out of the creek, and kids bathe in it or drink it. I don't know how, what they do with it, but it's a mess, and it's a health issue.
First time we've heard of, I've heard of it at least. I mean, I speak for them, so probably not the place. I can't, that's about all I can do, especially discussing it on stage, and first time I've heard about it, it's not--
Yeah, it's a mess. I've talked to several people that just don't get nowhere.
Okay.
We'll see what we can do for you.
All right, thank you.
You could leave your phone number over here for us.
I'll do that.
Is that, do we have another one? Did you want to--
Did you have anything? David Reeves.
Hello, I'm David Reeves with the Power of the Past. My address out of home is 2226 Idaho. I just wanted to thank you guys and give you a report on our tractor show. I'm late doing it, but, you know, you'd give us the free dumping and that, all that kind of stuff helps us. We got the grant from the Visitor Center, and the visitors, or the Visitor Center, those people out there really helped us this year. They volunteered to do all of our exhibitor bags up for us, and so they stuffed all them, saved us a lot of time, and the ambulance department was there. They was there all three days, and I was just gonna tell you, we had 5,200 people that came in, and that's a lot of, lot more folks than we've been having. I mean, we're growing, and we were down a little bit on tractors. We just had a little over 300, but, you know, fuel is high this year, and a lot of them don't want to pull and all that, so that probably helped our attendance, but cut our tractors down. And we had 114 vendors. The only time we've ever had more is when we had a Alice Chalmers National Show, and normally we run 80 to 90, and this year we had 114. And the community, town, all that, they are great in supporting us. I mean, they're, they do real good, and we're, next year we'll have the Massey Expo in North America. That is a national Massey, Harris, Ferguson, whatever, all related to Massey. This is a show we were to have in 2020, and COVID shut it down, and so we fought for it, got it back, so we're gonna have it next year. And those folks are really, they're thinking it'll be a big show because most of their Massey staff came from the Northeast, and this is the farthest they've ever had a national show south and west. And we went to South Dakota, presented our show to them, got picked, so we went through quite a bit to try to get it. So, but I just wanted to thank you all and tell you we appreciate all the support and all that, so that's all I've got, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our first item of business is an exciting one. We are giving a life-saving award to dispatch, and I'm gonna mess these names up, Dispatchers Owen Wasson and Anessa-- what was the last name?
Beck.
Beck? Okay, Anessa Beck. Janaya Fleming is going to, our emergency communications manager is going to help us out with this one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to take the time this morning to highlight two of our employees and share how extremely proud I am of both of them. In the evening hours of October 20th of this year, Owen and Anessa received a call from a father in rural Franklin County requesting assistance to perform CPR on his 55-day-old premature son that was not breathing. Owen quickly verified the address and provided CPR instructions while Anessa dispatched the responders. Anessa continued to give the updates on the status of the infant to the sheriff's office, EMS, and Williamsburg Fire Department first responders while fielding additional incoming calls and radio traffic while Owen and the father went through several rounds of CPR until the infant started breathing on his own. They both kept very calm during this very stressful time, and without their quick response, the outcome could have been very different. The actions of both Owen and Anessa are keeping with the finest traditions of 911 excellence and reflect great credit upon themselves and the Emergency Communications Center. And so Owen and Anessa, I wanted to present you with these life-saving awards for your outstanding performance. Here, a whole shot.
We are gonna take a picture.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Very cool. All right. Good over you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think pictures-- Jim will stand in front of the podium. Can you just get a picture through the front? Stand. I brought a front row person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't know if anybody wanted to say anything, but, you know, not all of our stories end up so well when you have 911 operators. I think last night on the news, they had a story about a guy that gives CPR lessons, and then three weeks later, he went into cardiac arrest, and the people that he had given the lessons to end up saving a life, so these are the kinds of things that are important that we don't realize, but thank you very much for your service to the community.
Ian, I would, would point out, and I don't have great familiarity with this specific incident, but our dispatch center is running so well right now, and I could argue easily that it's in the best shape it's ever been. Sarah and Janaya are managing fantastic, and Janaya has been fantastic. I've told her, she's been a revelation. She, she's an excellent manager. We used to have rampant turnover in that department, and we hardly have any at this point. They, they just, they're all bought in, and they're working together so well, so super pleased with all of them. And Janaya's right, this, this specific incident is a reflection on that entire organization and what they do every day, so thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. All right, we move on to consider approving tire bids. This is not near as exciting, sorry, David.
Yes, it, this is rather mundane in comparison, for sure, so like we always do, we sent out the bid packet to, I think, five different tire service firms that we ordinarily do business with. We received two bids with Pomp's Tire Service submitting the lowest and best bid for, for both bid packages. We're getting a total of 21 tires for just under $19,000, and we would recommend moving forward with the Pomp's Tire bid.
Can we put these back on the consent agenda? They used to be on the consent agenda before.
The, the permission to seek bids is, is definitely on--
These were, these were on there to, okay. Even awarding them?
I've always brought them before you. We can change that if you, if you would like.
I, I think we have--
Yeah, culverts and tires used to be on the consent agenda, purchasing them, so.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that that occurs next time.
Make a motion to approve purchasing the tires.
Okay.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Sheriff Dickinson.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on.
Could we go back and pick up the consent agenda?
Did we not, oh, no, we did not do that, sorry. All right. Consent agenda, the items for the consent agenda are minutes from the meeting on October 10th, 2023, claim vouchers in the amount of $379,080 and $92, and payroll in the amount of $1,334,389.55.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor. Sheriff Dickinson.
Yes. All right. Anything else before we move on to staff reports? All right, good job. Yeah.
I brought this up a couple of weeks ago. I just want to get it locked down because I think this date works better for my leadership team. November 15th, which is two weeks from today, is the day I would like to have that department head beating, including all of you, if you think you can make that work.
Good for me. If I can just add to November 15th, that's the day that we plan to have the election canvas right after this meeting, too. I wouldn't think that those would interfere with each other. It's a city-school election, so it should be a brief canvas, so you might want to just block off your whole morning. If that works for you guys.
Yeah, November 15th works great with the canvas, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Department head meetings, fine, I, I didn't request it, but--
Okay.
And I'll just speak briefly. I am vaguely familiar with Mr. Leach's situation, not intimately. Codes Court, I've told all of you, if that's something that you want us to prioritize, we can. We've just had a lot of turnover in planning and zoning, from Larry to Kenny, Kenny wasn't here long, and now Pat. And this is not an indictment on Pat Toth. I mean, Pat's here trying to learn his position, so, and we've had renewable energy we've dealt with, we've got new sanitaryian, new building official. We can prioritize Codes Court, but I just need that direction, and it is gonna mean that we're gonna put some other stuff on the back burner, including getting Pat and his staff acclimated to their roles, but again, that's not a discussion we need to have at this meeting. I'm just letting you know, we can't do that. It's just gonna take time.
I think it's something we could discuss, and we've discussed Codes Court a little bit. Cities, municipalities, of course, have different needs. I guess nobody moves to the county because they want to be, have more services or more rules, more regulations. Now, that, you, what you've got going on there, never seeing it, just hearing about it today, sounds awful, but I don't want to make a system, you know, I guess a purehocracy because of one bad situation. There's not just one bad situation. Obviously, we need a way to remedy it. I know if there's, we do have, it's for us much more difficult. What do we have to take, a civil route? If we have a dump site, things like that, we can do it. For a one-off, I don't know that I'd want to start a whole new system, a whole new set of rules, a whole new, on everybody because of, because of that. Maybe we can look more that way, and certainly the environmental health aspect, we have the ability to, to regulate that. So, I, I would want us to kind of go to our toolbox we've got now and exhaust options before we put additional cost and expectations on everyone else.
I would kind of agree. I, I know part of your situation, and I, and I would like you to talk to Pat and then see if we do have anything that we can go and take care of it with, with what we already have on the books, because they're supposed to have a water source, and they're supposed to have subject system, and they're supposed to, you know, and see, see what, what we can do with what we already have on the books before we go doing the whole--
All right, I said one more thing. Had to deal this last year with armadillos. Works left in my yard, I had to get rid of them, most likely, and I'm not saying I know 100%, but most likely they live in the tires, which is 500 tractor tires piled up down here on the ground, and they come out at night to feed my dog, bring home, show me the control. Well, that's a good thing to carry a lot of. That's, that's one of the main issues.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'm only gonna say one thing, make it quick. This has been an ongoing deal for 10 years at least, and a situation happened, cropped up overnight. This one situation, at least documented 10 years ago, so, and there's a lot of places all over the county, but we just don't have the enforcement to take care of it.
That's all I have, Ian.
Okay. Paul Bean, do you have anything? No? Pat?
Speak on the situation we're talking of and where we're at right now. Good morning, first of all. So, I did go out to Mr. Leach's property, I believe it was last week. We did a little tour of his property, showed me all the hotspots of what his, his neighbor's property is. We got some tire pits, we have a lot of just loose debris. He kind of just gave me a run of, of the situation. I'm, got kind of sped up to where Kenny left off on the situation. I am understanding that there is a lawsuit between neighbors, and so I'm trying to just navigate the situation to not bring us into something like that. However, yes, there is a big issue with them not having water, there is children on the property, and I'm gonna, I, the plan was to start seeking potential services from the state as far as what we can do with there being children involved with a non-sanitary situation. I'm also getting Brian's ideas of what we can do from the environmental sanitation point of this, but the real--
Suffice to say, you're on it.
Yes, sir, I, I just wanted to give you guys enough--
Well, we'll--
That we are working on it, so, okay.
Thank you. All right, Sheriff.
Good morning. I guess to keep the theme going, we've also responded out there a few times to some requests, especially with the, with the children, child, and native care situation, so.
How soon, how long ago did you?
It's been, I don't know, I've, I've talked with Don about it--
Last six months.
Yeah, it's been, it's been within the year, so. The, what I wanted to talk about was, this last weekend, we had the funeral for Deputy Sprinkle, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge some assistance we received from some other agencies. Ottawa Police Department covered calls throughout the county. They patrolled the county during that time to allow all of our staff the opportunity to attend that funeral. Wellsville Police Department also helped, helped out with this, and, and then Highway Patrol and Miami County Sheriff also helped us. They lived over in Miami County, and so Miami County volunteered, they had deputies sit at their, at their house while we had funeral, had their services and stuff going on, just to make sure, give them that extra peace of mind while they were away, so. And then also the Lenexa Police Department took, they headed up the honor guard for us for this. So, the partnerships that we have with all of our other agencies is kind of what helps not just our day-to-day operations, but helps us get through some of the tough times as well, and so I want to do publicly thank each of those organizations for their, for their assistance, and so that's really all I have unless you guys have questions for me this morning.
I will say you did a heck of a job.
Thank you very much.
Funeral.
Thank you.
General Lee, do you have anything? Did Emergency Communications have anything else to-- Okay. David?
Okay, so yesterday afternoon, we had the bid opening for Old 50. We had three bidders, and Superior Bowen out of Kansas City was the apparent low bidder for alternate one at $3,731,916. The alternate two low bidder was Bettis Asphalt at $3,750,806. Alternate one, the difference between one and two, alternate one uses, is expected to use the Millings as the base material, alternate two uses AB3 as that base material. That was one of the changes that was, whenever we pushed it back, that was one of the changes that were made to the plans, just to have that available for the contractors. As it turned out, the, the, using the Millings turns into being the cheapest option. Right now, we're, the engineers reviewing the bids and the, and the bid bonds and that sort of thing, making, making sure all the math is correct and that sort of, those items. Hope to have a recommendation to you here next week. The engineer's estimate on the project was just under 3.5 million, so that, the, with the biggest discrepancy in the, between the engineer's estimate and the bids, has to do with the dirt work associated with making the road a little wider. The engineer felt like it would be a simpler process. Contractors thought otherwise, so that's the difference, biggest difference between those. We are exploring ways that we can bring down the, the cost of that. There's a few items that we think that we can do with our own county forces that will bring, could result in a savings of 100,000 to 125,000 or so. With that being us installing all of the driveway culverts on the gravel entrances, that's something that we do every day and certainly within our capabilities, and then also removing and replacing all the signage along Old 50 for this project. That is something that we can do in-house. There's another line item where the contractors would come in and pothole to verify the, the utility depths as a part of the project. We feel like we can pull that out and, and go with a directly contract with somebody to provide that service at a much cheaper cost, so we think that we can reduce it, again, by 100,000 to 125,000 dollars or so, and, and that, that'll be part of our recommendation, so, you know, a little disappointed that the, the bids were that high, but at the end of the day, it's still a good project, and KDOT's still providing a million and a half dollars towards this, so I'll be working with Janet and Derek to figure out the, our component, our funding mechanism to pay for this, but I think we had, we had three good contractors, and Superior Bowen is a well-known contractor in the Kansas City area that does a lot of asphalt projects, so I think we had three good companies bid on it. Do you have any questions about that? And I will also say that the engineer will be here next week to answer any questions. If you have questions about Millings or AB3, he'll be able to answer that and bring some additional documentation of how the Millings work and, and that sort of thing, if there's any questions related to that. The price difference between the Millings and the, the rock is not significant, you know, less than $20,000, so something to consider. And we will also, you know, if, if the commission would rather not go forward with these bids, we'll present a, another alternative that we can, we can analyze that would be cheaper. I'm not sure that it would result in a, in the best product--
We'll have a meeting for all that, though, won't we? We'll have a meeting about all the details?
Absolutely.
About all of that next week.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we'll bring all that, and we'll have the engineer here to kind of walk us through those things. I received a few complaints about the fiber, I've received quite a few complaints over the course of the fiber optic installation around the county. In each instance, when I've reached out to those folks, they have done a pretty good job of addressing those complaints. Last week, received some concerns about where they went across some gravel driveways, the, the backfilling effort was, was, was not great, and then when we got so much rain, it really showed some deficiencies there. I reached out to them, and I believe that they've been out to add some rock to those locations, but we will certainly keep an eye on that and address things as they come up, and I do want to say that they have been very responsive. They, when I reach out to them, if I don't get them right away, they always get back to me within a reasonable amount of time and have done a pretty good job of addressing the concerns on the ground, so we'll stay on top of that. Also, last week, in relation to the, the road vacation question, the, the subject of gates came up, and so I've been doing some research on policies and procedures associated with gates, what other communities, what other counties are doing, and so I hope to bring that back to you next week to, to talk about that so that we can have some alternatives. The last time that the county installed any gates was in 2003, so it's been a number of years, and I haven't fully researched that, but I think there were some odd things associated with that that I think we can do a little better on-- associated with that, that I think we can do a little better on if, if that's a direction that we want to go. So I'll, I hope to have some information for you to consider next week as well. And that's, that's all I have.
Just have one thing to add. We are having late voting in the office tonight till 7 o'clock, and tomorrow till 7:00. It will be open on Saturday also. So if you know anybody who needs to vote before Election Day, there's plenty of time still.
All right, Commissioner.
I did attend the Wellsville meeting the other night. It was a pleasant to see the county very well represented at that meeting. Paul was there and Derek was there, and both give a presentation of appreciation of the cooperation between the city and the county on two projects already, and maybe more. And Paul's working on a couple more with them right now up there. That'll be a definite improvement for, for the whole community. So I'm not sure, when the time comes right, he'll bring that to us and, and share it with everybody, you know. But he's already working with them on it, so. And it was, it was good to see, because all the 23 years I've been there, I maybe have seen myself and, and Paul in his tenure, but now with Derek having a good connection with the community also face-to-face, not just hear about them or, or read about them or anything, actual face-to-face commitment to us to keep working together. And yesterday, I did attend, I belong to this representative area on the Merzine Basin Authority, and we make recommendations that pass on to Kansas Water Office, and there's seven different advisory boards across the state of Kansas. And we had it at Lacy in Kansas. They move, move it around all over the Merzine Basin, and it was very good conversation. Pat attended that meeting also, went down there, so had a surprise, you know, but it was a good deal. I saw Larry was very involved in for years, you know, so. And we had a good turnout, and they had a good, a group of people from KDAT, Kansas Water Office, and answered a lot of good questions and, and brought up a lot of things people don't think about. Well, there's another small town just south of Chanute last week ran out of water. They can't get water. They're bringing it in by transport trucks to get water. So, you know, I mean, that county don't put themselves in that issue, but if it ever comes to that issue, then our emergency manager never be, but it'd be right in the middle, middle of that issue. And I want to mention one other thing. I know Code's Court is something we've talked about for several years. Not in favor of it to take rights away from people, just kind of protect the rights of the people, other people that have to endure with the issue and understand the lack of interest maybe from the whole board, because I'm the only one in my district that doesn't have Code's Court. I mean, some of your district has Code's Courts, ain't it? You know, that protects you. You don't get near the phone call if I did on the issue, because Wellsville's the only one, and I never get a call from there on, because they have their own. But now with Radital doing that, it's, but that is something we need to continue talking about.
All I got.
Yeah, happy to have that conversation, weigh the pros and cons. I don't want to give the impression that I'm just against it just already before discussing it. I just don't, just want to caution us not to make a knee-jerk decision or, or weigh the pros and cons.
And I, I would like to sit down with Pat, because Pat, I am confident that Pat and I are going to work together for a long time, get his views, and really dig into it. I mean, we would have, not that this is bad, but really, we'd have to hire a judge. What's that going to cost? What would the scheduling look like? So that we can bring all of you. I mean, we've discussed it as an idea for years, but we've never really drilled down into what it would take. I, I want to do that.
And I may be wrong. I may change my mind. I, yeah, so I'm not dug in.
So that we can make, as you've said, Cole, and you, Don, an educated decision on is this the decision that we would like to make and have all the factors there? So I completely agree, think we need to discuss it, and pro discussing it, it would give us a tool potentially to use if the five of you think it's best. So we'll, going to take a little bit of time, given what we have going on and planning and where our staff's at, but we'll start that process, at least get the ball rolling towards that discussion.
As well as a remedy towards the situation.
Absolutely.
All right. Last Wednesday, I went to the October meeting of the Kansas Associated Counties Board meeting. They finished up their legislative policy that will be voted on at the annual meeting or in December. Thursday, I went to the hospital board meeting. They are proactively trying to find a solution to our not being able to have obstetrics at the hospital. They have told their corporate that is their, it is their intention to find a solution, and corporate is completely behind that, so hopefully it won't happen right away. But it is definitely something that they are continuing to try to find a solution for. Chamber coffee at Zelda's on Friday was very well-attended. The only other thing I have is Tuesday is Election Day. Unfortunately, if you have a problem with what's going on in the county, or the state, or Washington, DC, you can't vote and do anything about it on Tuesday. You have to wait till next year. But this year, it's school boards and city officials. And just get in the habit of going and voting. There is one more thing that's a county-wide issue that will be on everybody's ballot, and that is the 30% food. So whether you are for or against it, get out and vote. You hate to have something that you really care about not pass or pass because you didn't vote. So get out and vote Tuesday. Otherwise, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, we are.